Mr. Henry Brewer, invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty and wise God, Creator of the universe, we thank you, Lord, for allowing us this day to see. We thank you, Lord, tonight, God, for the invitation to being able to come, Lord, tonight, and to pray with these men and women to make great decisions for the public schools of Robinson County. We ask you, Lord, tonight, God, that you restrict the superintendent from day to day, Lord, as he make decisions for the public schools of Robinson County. We pray tonight, Father, for each board member, Lord, as they make decisions, Lord, that they'll make decisions concerning the public schools of Robinson County. Every child, every parent, every staff member that works for this organization, we pray, God, that they will consider all those factors, Lord, when making decisions. Our Father, we thank you again for this day that you allowed us to see. We pray, Lord, to continue to bless each member as they continue to work for the public schools of Robinson County. In Jesus' name we do pray, amen and amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance by Union Elementary Beta Club?
Good evening Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Williamson, Board members and Cabinet members. I am Kelsey Cummings, Assistant Principal of Union Elementary School, and I am very proud and honored to introduce to you the Union Elementary School Beta Club. And I just have to say that we are extremely proud of them because they brought back 10 plaques to Union Elementary School two weeks ago from the Beta Club Convention. So at this time, we will say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地无边， just a straw.
Kelsey, will you have them introduce themselves, please?
Absolutely. We will start, we'll start with Mr. Boyd.
My name is James Boiler and I won first place in jury.
My name's Evergill, but I didn't go.
My name is Peyton Hunt and I didn't go either.
My name is Donald Luckily and I didn't go.
My name is Kylie Todd, I didn't go.
My name is Karen Hunt and I went.
My name is Paisley Luckily and I went.
I need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. I've got a motion by Mr. John Simmons and a second by Mr. Henry Brewer to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye, all opposed no, motion carries. Approval of minutes, open session. I've got Mr. Simmons with a motion for approval of the minutes, open session. Mr. Henry Brewer with a second, all those in favor say aye, all opposed no, motion carries. Information items, North Carolina Beta Convention update, Ms. Jessica Sealy.
Good evening Chairman Lawson, Dr. Williamson, Board members. I would like to give a brief update on the Beta Convention. As you can tell, the students here, that's what it's all about, and they went and they represented well. They actually came back with over 50 awards, including multiple first place awards. So let's give them a hand for that. And all of the students who placed at the state convention have the opportunity to compete at the National Beta Convention at the Savannah International Convention Center in Savannah, Georgia in June. And as you can see up there are some deep branch elementary students, and they did get fifth place in Living Literature. So this is a wonderful opportunity for our students. And the smiles truly say it all, we are so proud of them. And I want to give a couple of student and staff shout outs. So Keely Deal, she is the North Carolina Junior Beta State President for the 2023-24 school year, and she spoke during the Elementary Junior Beta Convention. She's an eighth grade student at Prospect Elementary School, let's give her a hand. And Terrell McNeil, a South Robinson Middle student, was elected to serve as the State Secretary for the Beta Club during the convention, let's give him a hand. And lastly, academic coach Jamie Bernie, he was selected as the NC Beta Council member and became a lifetime status sponsor after serving as a state sponsor-elect and sponsor for two consecutive terms, let's give them all a hand.
Okay, next on information items is Blue Ribbon Communication Award, Ms. Sealy.
So Board members, could you join me at the podium for a special presentation? So I wanted to let you know, inform you that our communications department did receive multiple Blue Ribbon Awards for Outstanding Communications from the North Carolina School Public Relations Association this Friday during ceremony in High Point. I'm truly honored for this recognition, and it has truly been a joy to tell the story of the public schools of Robinson County. I hope I can do so for many years to come, thank you. Yeah, will y'all stand together? Yeah. Thank you, thank y'all.
Can one of us say something on Miss Sealy's behalf? I, I'm just truly proud of Miss Sealy. I, I mean, she spearheaded this whole thing. Of course, Dr. Williamson tried to tell her what to do, but it's her expertise, I think, that brought it to fruition, and I think we need to give her a big hand as well.
I'd like to also recognize Miss Sealy. I spoke with Dr. Williamson early on, and I said, you know, we can end up being, our weakest link is lack of communication. Lack of communication sets a bad environment for all of us. And Jessica has came on board, and she has really kept us abreast. We've gave her suggestions on giving us handouts each, each board meeting to know monthly what's going on at each school, and man, I'm gonna tell you, there's a lot going on. And I saw on Facebook this past week, Ms. Jessica, where some people made comments that board members weren't at some of the functions. But if they only knew, they only knew what's going on in our school system, you just can't be in 50 places at one time. But we appreciate everything you do for us.
Next is Black History Month, Ms. Jessica Sealy.
So as a reminder, February is Black History Month, and this is a time where we celebrate the culture, traditions, and contributions of African Americans to our world. And there are several observances and programs happening at the school level this month in honor of Black History Month, thank you.
Thank you. Next is 2023 Year Over Year State Analyst Report, Dr. Wendy Dorsey-Carr, Dr. Deborah Dallas.
Good evening Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Williamson, and Board members. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about the 2023 Year Over Year Analysis from the Public Schools of Robinson County and DPI. North Carolina 22-23 Test Results and the Year Over Year Test Analysis Report indicates clear signs of continued academic recovery from COVID. The report indicates further progress towards recovery, meaning that PSRC and North Carolinianly, North Carolina, I'm sorry, are steadily continuing to recover from the pandemic, which gains virtually all across all grade levels and in most areas. PSRC is recovering at a faster pace than the state. On average, the data shows that PSRC schools are showing signs of academic recovery in nearly every subject with the strongest gains measured in EOG reading grade three. Notable gains are also found in reading and math for grades three, five. These district-wide gains can be attributed to the implementation of new curriculum for reading and math. The purpose of this report is to provide insight into understanding to the extent to which students have recovered across the district since the pandemic and answer a common question, how do we know when students have fully recovered? So what I want to share first, you'll see up here, is our third grade EOG. And so I'm going to go through what these lines mean before I describe what you see in the data. So you'll see a solid purple line. That solid purple line represents how PSRC has performed on the EOG in third grade math over the last few years. Then you'll see a dotted purple line, which shows the trajectory, if pandemic had incurred, where we would have gone. And then the blue line, dotted line, shows a three-year average. Above that, you'll see a gray line, and that gray line is showing how the state performed throughout the last several years. And the gray dotted line shows what they would have performed if no pandemic had occurred. So if we look at this, what you'll see is, the goal is for us to close our gap. So what we're trying to do is close and get back up to that dotted blue and dotted purple line so that we can close the gap prior to the pandemic. And so what you'll see is, at the angle of our purple line is at a little higher rate, which shows that we're closing our gap a little faster than the state in third grade math. If you look at fourth grade, same thing, you'll see that the dotted blue and purple line are overlapping, and you can see the tremendous dip we took in 2021 and how close we are getting to closing that gap prior to the pandemic, and that our angle of our purple line is at a sharper angle. And so we are also closing at a quicker pace compared to the state to their dotted line. Fifth grade math, same thing, you'll see that the purple and the blue line are almost overlapping as far as the dotted lines, and that we are closely recovering towards our gap prior to the pandemic. And you'll see that the state is doing the same and at about the same rate in fifth grade. Sixth grade, we do see a dip in sixth grade, and we see this occurring. We had a discussion, why does this occur in sixth grade? And what we noted is in sixth grade across the district, we had a lot of subs in sixth grade. So we have already identified a plan of action of how to support these kids in seventh grade that are now going to be in that math, and how to support them through that process. Seventh grade, what you'll notice that we've already closed, we are touching the purple line, so we've already met the trend in getting close to the district three-year average. So we've almost closed the line, and that, once again, this is at a steeper or faster rate than the state. In eighth grade, what you'll notice, this is one of the ones we do not have a current curriculum in, but this also does not include our eighth graders that take Math 1. They do not include those in those numbers, so those are separate from this. So this is purely eighth grade students, and you'll see that we see that we're almost closing our line. But we do know that with implementation of changes of new standards and new curriculum, we'll be able to support that work as we move forward. Math 1, you'll see that we are currently touching the line, so we have recovered from pre-pandemic. So we're right at where we need to, and you see that the state still has a wider gap between where they were pre-pandemic and now. So what you can notice in all of our math, that we're really getting close to closing that gap completely, and it is at a little faster pace than what the state is doing.
Okay, so we are going to take a quick look at reading and English and some science. So this chart represents our reading for third grade. As you can see, that our recovery is at a faster rate because of the incline of that purple line, which is evidence of strong recovery. For our fourth grade reading, you can also see that as our purple line kind of climbs forward or upward, that we are almost closing the gap. Once again, we are recovering at about the same rate as the state when you look at the way that that line is going upward. For fifth grade, we are slightly, we're kind of approaching where that extended district trend line is. You can see there that the gap, the drop was not really there, but we've remained somewhat flat for fifth grade reading. So that is an area that we continue to work on. For sixth grade reading, once again, we have some, some growth that's somewhat flat. But if you look at, see where our gap is, we do not have a gap from where we were pre-pandemic, right? Because you're looking at that purple dotted line and that blue dotted line. For seventh grade, when you look at our reading scores, you can see that we had a drop in 2021 post-pandemic, but you can see the recovery, and you can see how that purple line is climbing upward, and it's climbing at a steeper rate, which means we're recovering at a faster rate. Once again, we are closing our gap as we are over the purple dotted line and have approached that blue dotted line. Eighth grade reading, very similar. You can see that we are above our purple dotted line. We're recovering at a faster rate as well, because you can see how that purple line is climbing upward. For English 2, this one's kind of interesting, because even post-pandemic, we were above that district trend. So these are positive scores, showing that we are definitely above our three-year average threshold. In science, you can see the drop that we had post-pandemic in fifth grade, and that we are steadily recovering from that. This is an area that we do continue to recover as you look at our gap between that last purple dot and where we are with our blue dotted line and purple dotted line. But interesting to see how the state also had a really big drop post-pandemic as well. In eighth grade science as well, you can see the drop that occurred post-pandemic, very similar pattern to the state. So this is an area that we are continuing to recover from. EOC Biology, they also had a large drop after the pandemic, but you can see that their recovery has been faster. You can also see that we are recovering at a faster rate than the state because of the sharpness of that incline. So at this time, do you have any questions about this report? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Manuel Hittier.
I don't question the report, I just have some, I guess, some talking points. This report dealt with the results or the improvements or the dips after the pandemic, before the pandemic to after the pandemic, okay. Have you had an opportunity, or maybe the state, or you all, to study the dips from grade level to the next grade level? I could easily see there's something going on between the fifth grade and sixth grade here with this report. Usually, there's a dip when a child leaves the third grade and go to the fourth grade. Not pre-pandemic, post-pandemic, I mean just ordinarily. And there are all kinds of theories as to why this is. I guess my question is, this is great, I'm glad that we're trying to get out of that hole, but I have a concern, are we looking at the data from another viewpoint, from grade level to grade level? And do we have our own test force here trying to see where we have problems that we see? Just like science, I know that's a problem. At one time, we were pretty well, thought we had it until the curriculum changed, and then we went backwards. My point is, have you guys had a chance to look at our data and see where we have problems from grade level to grade level? Not pre-pandemic to post-pandemic. To me, that is something that I think that I, we need to look at. Just, you may know something that I don't know now.
So great question, but we do, as we analyze our accountability data, we look at what's called cohort data. So we actually take that group of kids that might have started in third grade two years ago, and we can see how they have performed over time. So we track them as a group of students. Because a lot of times, when you see accountability data, you're looking at this year's fourth graders compared to last year's fourth graders. Cohort data allows us to track a group of kids. Now granted, you have some kids that move in and move out, right? So it changes a little bit, but we're able to track that cohort data over time. So we can see if we have cohorts that as they've been progressing over grade spans, if there's an issue there.
And to say that, I think this is a lot of progress. Mr. Chair, we almost lost a year of education with the pandemic. I'm not saying that we lost everything, but it, it almost froze. So to see this moving, that's excellent. But I do think we need to look at data closely with this grade to grade. And a lot of times, you would not believe, you all would believe, because you're here every day, a lot of it has to do with the change in the curriculum, the maturity of the child, and there are so many factors, but it's something that I think we need to look at.
Yep, great point.
Mr. Henry.
I know we had a report that we had 72% of improvement, and I want to say that's tremendous, that's a great improvement. And we're looking at numbers here now of our students. Now, in relations to this, has anybody talked with our staff, our teachers, and are they more inclined to accept the program more so than we did going through the struggles of trying to implement this new program?
Yes, so as we've been doing more of our data dives, and so schools are really spending more time on the data now, we have more data sources, because we know this is one moment in time, right? So they're using the data that is part of the curriculum to help them make some really quick informed decisions. But what we see is teachers now are more comfortable, because now they're adapting based on their students' needs. So if I know there's a certain group that has specific needs, they're adapting and changing, because that's what we want them to do, right? Make it their own, based on the needs of their students, so that they can really make it an informative lesson to say, I know these two students aren't doing well, let me figure out what I need to add. Or these two students are more accelerated, what do I do to help push them even further? So we've seen that, that they're better at designing the lessons now to really take those things into account.
Anybody else, Mr. Craig?
Again, thank you for the report, and like, we're improving, and that's excellent. One thing I would ask, to go back and look at, if you, if you have it. It used to be with kids, when they went from elementary to middle, there was a dip. They, and, and we used to attribute it, okay, when you're in elementary and you're in the fourth grade, and that's the biggest grade, you're the senior on campus. Then you go to a middle school, or a school that's got now fifth grade through eighth, and you're the youngest on campus. So I would ask that we look at the data, or data that you would have coming from that, to make sure from that elementary to middle, and even if it's middle to high school, that we're not losing those kids, you know, and when they're changing in those grade levels.
And that's part of what we do do on the District Improvement Team. So we do pull all of that data to look at, because we know certain grade levels, like we'll see a dip in fourth, like Dr. Manuel mentioned, or we'll see a dip in sixth grade, because those are those areas where we see those big transitions. But we do have conversations, because some schools don't see the dip, so why is that school not seeing the dip? So our conversation is about how do we target those particular schools to help them, because one school may be doing something that's really helpful to help with that transition. But one of the things we do notice, if they're on the same campus, the dip doesn't seem to occur as much as when they have to actually change campuses. So those are things that we look at, and even in our curriculum meetings, go through all the time to talk about what do we see in the data going on in each school so that we can adapt based on what the data is showing us.
I think it's interesting to look at some of the patterns, the feeder schools. Like you said, we have schools that are just four or five, and then they transition. But we also have some schools where we have several schools feeding into them. So it's kind of interesting to look at those different paths.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I may, Dr. Carr, Dallas, either one, talk to us about how our classrooms are different, that we're operating a formative classroom, that we get the feedback, the data in real time.
Yeah, I mean, I'll start. I mean, I think this is great data, right? But it's kind of old news. So what we have to do is make sure that every one of our classrooms operates as a formative classroom. So basically, when they are not only just giving an assessment, but whether it's an exit ticket or any type of student work, we're asking our teachers to closely monitor the learning, right? We're making sure that we're looking at how the students are performing right away, and making that teacher move to decide, do I reset the class? Do I have to pull back a group of kids? Do I have to work with these three kids? We have to make sure that we're using data in a more timely fashion as opposed to waiting, right? So it's when you're formative, you're looking at it in a proactive approach. And we've had a lot of movement this year on making sure that our teachers are monitoring the learning and making those instructional decisions right away.
Mr. Terry.
I'm glad that you mentioned being proactive, because, you know, when you look at the data, for, for the academic year ending in 23, compared to the academic year ending in 24, our graduation rate went from, from 84% to 79%, which is about a five point, you know, a 5% dip. So it, can, what do we, can we anticipate a dip in graduation, our graduation rate again this year? Or how does it, how does it look in terms of expected graduation rate for, for this year? Do you have metrics to measure that?
Mr. Chair, we, we had one high school that, that dipped, that really took our district rate down. Ms. Lewis, will you speak to that? We just sent the information out that we're starting the process earlier of identifying those kids that, who are not in position yet to graduate. We're gonna have that conversation on Monday. So again, the dip was, we had one school.
Good evening, we are working toward the cohort graduation rate. We started, I sent an email out to the principals this week so that they could identify those kids. They have not been identified or found in the past couple of years. So they have documentation that they have to turn in to us, they're working toward that. We have our ways to go, but we're getting started early and plan to move forward. I think they have to have it turned in by this Friday, and we're gonna have a conversation Monday with them. Are there any questions, any other questions?
Also, you said you had one school, I don't need to know. You got, the administration at the school, they have to buy into the fact that some of these children only need one course to graduate, or two. They got to buy into the fact that I'm going to recruit these children, let them go to, Nutlap, what's it called now, RAS, whatever it's called now, or Apex, or whatever it is, you know, to try to give these children an opportunity. They got to have that feeling to help those children, you know, to social worker, visit the kids. You got to have a unified effort to get those children to graduate on time, you know, with their cohort. So it can't just be up to just whatever, maybe it'll happen, maybe it won't. They got to bond together with their support staff to get those children in there to graduate with their peers. So that has a lot to do with it.
Relationships, yes ma'am. And we also have, this year, beginning this year, we have a cohort graduation rate of a level five. So if we find kids that graduated, or we found where they graduated after their fourth year, we can actually modify that now. Where in the past, we've not been able to modify that, so we will be able to modify that this year. So that grade, the fifth year graduation rate, we'll be able to modify it, just like we do with the grade, the graduation rate for four year.
Okay, everybody good? I want to give a Okay. Everybody good? I want to give um, a thank you from myself and this board for the teachers and staff of the public schools of Robinson County coming out of COVID and what they have done um, up to now, and the work that Dr. Carr, Dr. Dallas, and Ms. Lisa, and Ms. Graham have done. So, thank you. Next on, oh, next is public comment. I've got Trayvon McArthur. And as you're coming up, Ms. Trayvon, you have three minutes.
Hello, and good evening, everyone. My name is Trayvon McArthur. I am a community outreach specialist for enrollment assister program for Scotland and Robinson County. Uh, we are contracted by CMS Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services to provide healthcare enrollment assistance in Robinson and Scotland County, uh, assistance to Medicaid beneficiaries who may lose coverage because of Medicaid unwinding. So, this past uh, Christmas or holiday, you may have seen us at many places, especially Big Spark Mall. Uh, we had a table set up to capture as many people uh, as we could who may or may not have health coverage, or may have health coverage, but it was too expensive. And we, at no cost, um, helped these individuals look at certain plans, and they chose what was best for them. Um, our EAP assisters that that work out in the field, they are certified by CMS, uh, to support CMS under federal reg- regulations. Um, uh, what we're doing today is reaching out to everyone, um, to inform you uh, who we are and what we do when you see us, uh, and how our effort can be beneficial to the community members in the area. As we await for the beginnings of Medicaid unwinding process that is estimated to affect thousands of residents, we want to be proactive about setting them on the right path for themselves and healthcare coverage. And of course, we're working diligently every day on variety of things. Uh, we also help with um, food, shelter, clothing, um, employment, college uh, assistance that they need looking for, money for school. So, there's other things we do uh, outside of Medicare, um, healthcare marketplace, helping them get enrolled um, when it's that time. Um, as we continue to explore potential opportunities for partnership, uh, partnerships between our organizations, we believe that collaborating on initiatives such as time and place, uh, so uh, social media posts, flyer distribution could be mutual mutually beneficial. We would be grateful for the opportunity to connect with you and engage with uh, your members to discuss any questions or support we can provide. Please let us know at your earliest convenience when would be best time to reach out to you. Uh, if anyone want to reach out to me um, after this, uh, feel free, I'll be here. I have my business calls with me. Um, and I look forward to talking to any and anyone, um, everyone about uh, what we do in this community to try to help the our people out. We know there's a lot of uh, flu and and COVID and Ammonia going on, and we're just trying to get people covered. And those people who have other concerns, food, shelter, things of that nature, uh, we want to provide a resource to try to get them connected to those resources so that we can help them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Ms. Kathy Jackson.
My name is Kathy Jackson, and I'm from St. Paul's. Um, Mr. Chairman, school board members, and audience, I'm here to speak to you about the District Six redistricting changes that were made at the November ninth, two thousand twenty-one board meeting. Motion was made by Ms. Far- Farabee and seconded by Mr. William Gentry. And I'm just wondering, did all of y'all look at the maps that you voted on? Because what you did was you you took St. Paul's and split it down the middle. Now, it takes a village to raise a child, and you took half, you took half of our village away from us. You put us on Broad Street, on the south side is in District Eight, and that's a Lumberton District. On the north side is District Six, and that's a St. Paul's District. But yet, you didn't take our kids, didn't take the students. You took our votes, but you didn't take our students. So, you know, you need to think about maybe sending a bus down there to get those kids that you wanted them in your Lumberton District. You need to, you need to send a bus down there to get them, because they're still going to our schools, but their families can't vote for anything in our district. They have to vote in the Lumberton District. And uh, Red Springs, they suffered better worse than we did, because um, Peterson Elementary School is one of the first black institutions of Red Springs, and it was established in nineteen ten. It was cut from its proud position in Red Springs. It's in District Four now. And uh, an act of God destroyed this school in nineteen eighty-four. Well, the town and the community, they worked together, and they built it back for the students and the community. But yet, our school board went and removed it by drawing a line, and uh, y'all are the ones that did it. And you needn't, you cannot tell me you were thinking about the kids when you did this. There's no way, because half of our village votes in Lumberton, votes for the Lumberton District. And I think it's time that, you know, you either think about sending buses down there to get those kids that you wanted in your district, or fix it. You need to try to fix it. And the power is in your hands, and that's what you need to do, because we're not satisfied with it at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Brian Pittman.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Brian Pittman. Uh, I don't have a lot of experience in education. This is my first year out at Fairmont High School um, as an EC teacher. Um, and I've had some issues with um, my mentorship. Um, now, I've done long-term subbing. I got out of the bank. I was in banking for seven years. Um, and I've had some serious issues with with mentoring, and any one of us here can Google um, why teachers leave the profession. And it's being underprepared or lack of support for new teachers. And I have a passion for education. I didn't have a passion for banking. That's why I made this midlife change. Um, now, Dr. Barton has been nothing but understanding with my issues, and him and Principal Brooks have decided that they would um, agree upon relocating me to a position where I don't need as much support. But when I got my mentor sheet, I was asked to sign it, and I couldn't in good conscience sign it, because I simply was not provided what was on that sheet. Now, in the banking industry, those are terms of illegality. I don't know what it is here. But I was not provided with the mentorship, and I'm not trying to run anybody's name through the mud, because I know our schools are strapped for resources and for teachers. Everybody is busy. Everybody is overworked. But if we don't support new teachers, then we're going to continue to have issues like this, where our kids are not getting real teachers, they're getting full-time substitutes, which I was in that position before. Um, I'm lucky that Dr. Barton was understanding, and that Principal Brooks is understanding, and they worked together to provide me that. But these mentor sheets that go around to get signed, they shouldn't be just forms. We should be getting the support that that says it. It's not like something that says, you know, hey, I I took you on a tour or something like that. This says that I received meetings every week, and the contents and the minutes were on that sheet. That didn't happen. And once again, I'm not here to run anybody's name through the mud, but I am passionate about education. This is my home, and this is where I want to be. This is where I want to help at. Um, I realize I don't have as much uh, nearly as much um, experience as most of you in this room, but I do think we have to be mindful of our beginning teachers, and how we recruit those, and how we support them. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Next is action items. Mr. Bobby Locklear, Kaboom in North Carolina Connect Playground Contract.
Good afternoon, uh, good evening, Chairman Lawson, Dr. Williamson, board members. Back in our January meeting, we had Kewanda to come and speak with us from North Carolina Connect, and the opportunity to build a playground over in uh, the southern part of Lumberton. So, that playground will be built at Lumberton Junior. So, we're here tonight for you just to simply approve the contract that we discussed earlier.
Hang on a minute. Trey, are you?
You're talking about the Kaboom that Ms. Kewanda Mary presented?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Okay.
Yes, so so uh, Schwartz and Alex have reviewed the entire contract and made all edits. Kaboom is satisfied with the edits we've made. Uh, so yes, the contract is, has been reviewed.
Dr. Manuel?
Remember, I had a question about uh, the cost, and you said there would be the cost, but you wanted to check on it. There may be some insurance costs. You remember that?
Yes. So, so uh, originally, when we met, there would be, Kaboom originally had requested some additional insurance. They have since backed off. Our insurance coverage meets their bare minimum. So, there will not be a need for any additional insurance. The only cost that will be incurred is we will have to uh, incur a cost for site prep. But that would just be an area uh, you know, probably not as large as what you're seeing in this room here. But that would be the only, only cost.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we vote, Erica, can you address or you uh, how that insurance will work for that? We're just gonna add it to our system.
Currently, we meet all the liability insurance. We have a blanket coverage already. It will fall under that. As far as property insurance, uh, once it is built, we can add it to our property insurance. It'd be a minimal amount, maybe two, three hundred dollars for it to be added to our overall policy.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Kaboom in North Carolina Connect Playground Contract. I have a second by Mr. Vontae Leach. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roden. Next, on our action items is new inclusive playground need support. Mr. Gentry, Mr. Timothy Little, Latoya Bernie, and Dr. Williamson. Okay, Mr. Gentry?
Thank you, Chairman Lawson. We have heard a lot about uh, playgrounds in in recent days, and uh, we have pulled together as a community, uh, as a school board, and a civic organization, and I will say specifically, one that has been instrumental in in providing help for children uh, for many years. That really is what Kewandis is all about. And I'm uh, happy to be a member of the Kewandis of Robinson, Lumberton. Uh, we are celebrating one hundred years of existence and service to our community this year. It's our centennial celebration. And as a club, we wanted to do something special and something lasting that would serve our children for decades to come. And so, uh, after uh, much thought and much soul searching and and researching, uh, we decided that we would, as a, as a club, and as a community, to build a playground at Northeast Park. And we worked with the city of of Lumberton uh, to obtain that site. We're very blessed to be able to get a site uh, adjacent to uh, the park there at Northeast Park. And I wanted to bring it to the attention of both of Kewandis and public schools, is that we have been partners together over the years in many endeavors, and I'll just mention a few. Scholarships, uh, we have, as a, as a Kewandis Club, hosted the annual Christmas party uh, for special children, uh, First Baptist Church. We've done that for a number of years now, and we have a tremendous turnout for that event. It's just that we have a a large fellowship hall, and the, it's just overflowing with with children. Uh, we have had a clothing closet for many years. What I'm, what that is, is that we uh, furnish uh, credit cards, Walmart credit cards uh, to all of our uh, elementary schools, and specifically focused on second graders to uh, ask the schools to identify those children who have special needs for clothing, and to help provide uh, those, those needs as much as possible. Uh, we read to the second graders throughout the county uh, on Dr. Seuss Day, or somewhere close to Dr. Seuss Day, and leave behind a good supply of books uh, for the library at all of the elementary schools. And every year about this time, in fact, it's gonna happen in uh, one week, next Saturday, I believe it is, we are going to take a busload of children over to UNCP to uh, enjoy a basketball game. You know, often, we take for granted being able to get out and and go to a basketball game and other places, and uh, there are a lot of folks, including children, that are not able to do that. So, and I'm pretty sure everyone in here is aware of the ways, the many ways that we work together for the betterment of this community, our community. And so, we're blessed to have this evening with us, uh, a member of our Kewandis Club, one of our uh, leading members, a past president that has served, he serves children in other capacities as well. He is the Associate Director. I think that's that's your title. I'm gonna call you that anyway, the Associate Director of the Partnership for Children. Uh, he's also our Minister of Music at First Baptist Church. And so, at this time, I'm gonna ask him, if he would, to come and share, I believe we have a uh, a show, slideshow, that he's gonna come and uh, and share with us and uh, elaborate some on the features of this proposed park, and it is very, very special. So, I'm gonna ask him if he would come and share with us at this time, Tim.
Thank you, William. As William said, I'm a past president of Kewandis Robinson, Lumberton, and I am the Chair of the Hundredth Anniversary Past Presidents Committee. So, um, we were tasked with coming up with something extraordinary to represent our club and to commemorate our hundred years of service to Robinson County and to Lumberton. Uh, the project over, the playground that we're going to look at is particularly inclusive. Um, when we started working with the Play World Company, talking about a playground, um, even in talking with them, they offered us a playground that was fifty percent handicap accessible and fifty percent um, for children who are completely mobile. And we pushed back against that, and um, what we came up with, what we're going to look at is a playground that is eighty percent wheelchair accessible, and one's, one structure will be monkey bars that will be specifically for children who are completely mobile. But we felt passionate that this needed to be a project that was especially for children who can't go to any other playground, but at the same time, would be fun for all children. Um, I'm getting a bit ahead of myself, but this particular playground is optimized for children. for children who are ages two through 12. And the playground will feature an advanced, an advanced poured-in-place rubber fall zone. The fall zone that they're, that they will provide will be the equivalent of eight to 12 inches of wood mulch, but it will be a solid area so that wheelchairs can roll across it easily. Good next slide, please. You can see the K marks the spot. If you see the, the slide, it tells, it shows in relationship to the ball fields where the park will be. And if you think about, if you're familiar with the park, looking to the left, you would see the soccer fields and the football fields. And across the street and the canal is where the next phase of Pennington Park will be located. So this new area would be centrally located, will be centrally located in the park even as the park expands to include splash pad and softball fields. In looking into what we wanted to do, I found an article from 2021. According to the article, public schools Robinson County in 2021 served 3,400 special needs children. And looking at the census from the same year, that's just over 10% of our population under age 18, who need the same opportunities that all children take for granted. And we must step up to make sure that these, that all children have the opportunity to play together. As I mentioned earlier, we have selected Playworld Preferred to be our turnkey provider. And they will provide the surfacing, as I mentioned. They will provide all the equipment. They will come and install it. City of Lumberton has agreed to do the sidewalks around the perimeter. They will do all of the drainage, which will be installed before the, the rubber fall zone is poured. And they will also provide fencing so that the children, parents will feel safe with their children being inside the fencing. The next slide is a little bit old. I actually did it last Thursday. But since last Thursday, our total in the bank has grown to $274,725. So we're excited this week to be able to pay a deposit of $250,000 to begin making this a reality. And we are hoping to have our funding secured by April, to break ground in May, and actually have a grand opening in June. The rest of the slides just accentuate some of the play, uh, equipment. But at this time, I would like to offer you the opportunity to ask any questions you may have. The total cost of the equipment and installation is $500,000. So we are, we are working hard to make that a reality. We can go on and show what other folks have done. We've had a number of folks give $1,000. Number of folks give $5,000. Oliver Oil Company just gave $6,000. Jill and Cobal D. Wilson gave $10,000 just a couple of weeks ago. At the $25,000 level, Lisa and Kenneth Rust of Rust Enterprises have done $25,000. The City of Lumberton's already done 25 and committed an additional $25,000. Kwanis of Robinson-Lumberton Children's Foundation, which is a, a set of investments that we have made and held over the last 20 years or so, that from the actual Kwanis Club of Robinson-Lumberton has given $30,000 for this. Friends of Parks and Recreation have given $30,000 for this project, project already. Individual members as of last Thursday have given $2,450. And we're challenging our club to give $100 each. Each of our 100 members give $100 apiece. So as I mentioned, those numbers are a little bit out of date. But again, we have $274,275 in hand. We have an additional $138,500 approximately pledged. And we need approximately $132,000 more. Any questions?
Mr. Terry?
If, if the public schools decided to, to help contribute to this effort, what fund would that come from?
We have a contingency fund set up that we could support. Let me ask Dr. Carr, if you will, share with the board our justification and the impact that this playground will have on our EC program, please.
Hang on one second. I'm trying to get to you. Dr. Emanuel, would you cut your mic off, please?
I'm sorry.
So currently in Robinson County, we do not have an inclusive playground. With the growing number of students with wheelchair needs and social emotional needs or autism, there's a need for a inclusive playground here in Robinson County. When we have any sort of events for our students that we want to access, any inclusive activities, we have to go outside of the county to take part in those. So for example, when they do their extended school year in the summer, they actually have to take field trips outside of the county to access any sort of playground or take part in anything. So usually it's sort of, they're not part of the regular setting in those playgrounds. So this would actually give them an opportunity to interact with their peers on a playground and really be part of that community.
So, so none of our, none of our current playgrounds have equipment for students in wheelchairs? Or there's, there's no, okay. Have we ever, have, have we ever contributed to something like this?
So, so Mr. Terry, when we built our 23 playgrounds at all of the elementary schools across the district, we made all of them have at least one piece that was ADA accessible. That does not mean that, you know, it may be a one, one piece of equipment that you could put a wheelchair on or something of that sort. But all of the playgrounds that we installed are ADA accessible.
Oh, so, wait a minute. All of them's accessible, but with one piece of equipment?
The large structures that you would see, those large structures are ADA accessible. So we could push a child up onto that structure. It would take some help, but if I'm understanding this correctly, this could be something where the children could play themselves without necessarily the assistance of another individual.
Okay. And the entire playground is designed for?
For wheelchair accessibility. There are also quiet zones for children on the autism spectrum so they can go read or just be what they want to be. There are musical instruments that the children can play. And those are so that children can roll up to them in a wheelchair as well.
I got a question.
Mr. Trey?
Dr. Williamson, you got this as an action item on the agenda. Are you, are you going to, you got any more that you need to discuss?
There is, because if we want to contribute to this project, then we need some type of contract partnership between Kwanis, the City of Lumberton, and Public Schools of Robinson County.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until our next meeting.
Yes.
One thing we could do is move forward with a vote.
I don't know. Okay.
You could move forward with a vote to go forward with that agreement and have us negotiate that agreement for you. It's an interlocal agreement between Kwanis, the City of Lumberton, and the board. So if you want to table, you can, but you could also move forward and make a motion to vote on that.
I was going to ask another question. Dr. Williamson, what are the funds? We were discussing this, but we have no funds whatsoever being discussed. What, what type of dollar amount out of that contingency that you're talking about?
Right. It is, is our hope that the board, and we do have the money in a contingency, will contribute $50,000.
Dr. Emanuel?
What, what about the liability since we're sponsoring? Could we help be partially liable for anything? See, I, I don't. I'm like Terry, I don't have a problem doing it. I think it's needed. But do we know all the ins and outs about all that?
Hugh, can you answer that question, please?
As far as liability goes, there will be none. It's not on our property, it's no different. Take it, if you're donating to your favorite charity or whatever for that money to be right, used, put to use for a playground.
Well, is this also, this might be the Erica question. Is, may I do a follow-up?
Yes.
Is this the first time we donated to somebody? Can, can the public schools donate? I thought there was something somewhere I read a policy when I'm about donating.
We've made donations. I've, now I'd have to go back and research. I don't know if about this large of a, but I mean, we donate to the Hockey Association that sponsors our fifth graders that go to the hockey team. We've done smaller things to different community groups, to the EOP organization. They don't, they raise money for scholarships for our high school students. There have been other small amounts that have been donated.
But is there a policy on us? Or maybe it might be a state something on, we donating. Honestly, I, I can remember vaguely.
We can research that. I don't know of one presently, but I can definitely research it. And what with attorney.
Maybe I'm just getting C now, but I can remember something about school systems donating.
Dr. Emanuel and Erica, we did talk with Mr. Richard today, School Board Attorney. That is the reason why I addressed that, that it is permissible. That's why we're doing the partnership.
My question, my question is, if we bust our students from a school to this neutral environment, what is the liability? Who covers the liabilities? Is that within the contract?
Well, I'm sorry. If that would be considered a field trip, and then we assume that liability, we have coverage for field trips. So as long as it's approved, you know, by the school, they're driving on our bus, all of that, we take the, um, that liability as a field trip, a school-sponsored field trip. Just like our kids going to Beta or any basketball games, any of that, all of that's covered the same way.
Okay.
I would just add, Dr. Emanuel, you're correct. That's the thought behind the interlocal agreement. Is there some consideration behind it?
I'm sorry, did you?
So the thought behind the interlocal agreement, is there some consideration behind it? Making it beyond a donation? We're allowed to use that, you know, playground as we like in, in terms of that. And we can negotiate the terms to, you know, whatever y'all's preferences are. But it's beyond just a donation at that point when we have an agreement with the city and Kwanis.
So it's beyond a donation? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Craig?
Um, I believe this equipment, from what I've understood, this equipment at other places. When you say it was at least 80%, the wheelchair accessible, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The 80% and the fact we don't have nothing, I think all of that's great. And I think we do need it. But I will say this, I keep hearing questions here and questions there. And it's on here tonight as an action item. So now I will have to agree with Mr. Terry. Answer all these questions. Get all these questions answered for us and bring it back next month where I can see it on paper and we go from there. And, and then we take a look at it. Because that's a, you know, whether we can or can't do it, that's a, a big amount of money contributing to anywhere. And I just want to make sure all questions are answered before we do it. And as far as the playground equipment, I think that's fantastic for kids that can go to it. And we don't need to be sending kids to Columbia County or Columbus County to get on this equipment. If we can get it on it here in Robinson County, oh, that's great. But there's a lot of questions and I would just like to have them answered before we make a commitment to do this.
That sounds like a second. Thank you.
All right. There's a motion and a second to table for 30 days. Mr. Terry made the motion. Mr. Craig made the second. All those in favor to table it for 30 days, raise your hand. All opposed? Hang on a minute, I got to count. All those that wanted to table it, raise your hand again. Motion don't carry because it's a tie. It's a five-five tie.
I thought the chair broke the tie. We have 10 of us. Oh, my gosh.
So it follows on the, is there a motion to take care of the action on the floor now? Anybody want to put that motion in to approve the action item that's on? Okay, Mr. Gentry has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Britt has seconded the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Raise your hand. Action item does not pass. It will have to be brought back at a later date. Okay. Summer program plan? Ms. Lewis?
Good evening Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Williamson, and Board Members. Every year about this time, we start planning for our summer program. And that is our remediation period and our summer testing. That includes EOG reading grade three through eight, I'm sorry, math grades three through eight, reading grade four through eight, science grade five and eight, and EOCs as well as Extend One, three through eight, and grade 10. This year, we have put the plan in your packet for you to review and hope that you will approve it so that we can provide our summer testing for our students during the workdays.
Any questions?
She needs, does she need approval tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we approve the plan as presented.
Okay. I have a motion by Dr. Emanuel and a second by Mr. Henry Brewer in favor of the summer program plan. All those in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Likewise, motion carries.
And as a reminder, the summer program testing is not retesting. Third grade is not included reading. And any child that takes the summer test, they have to have a test from the year before they can actually take the summer test. So they have to have a marker before they can take that summer test, as a reminder. Thank you.
Next, on action item, request for playground equipment at Green Grove School. Mr. Hugh McQuine?
Good evening Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, Board Members. Having your packet a request from Reedley Branch Baptist Church for the playground equipment at Green Grove Elementary. The church is requesting this playground equipment for their own community. The church is requesting this playground equipment for their own community outreach program to be installed at their church facility. And for the community, for the community there. Also is. We recommend that the equipment be removed. It is considered a liability since the school has been closed for a few years now. From the liability side, there are people from the community going on the campus, playing on the equipment. Anything happened because we are not maintaining and has not been certified and inspected in the last several years, like other pre-K playgrounds have to be. So on that, we recommend that. We do need it removed, but instead of us removing it, the church in that community would like to remove that. They are accepting all liability and costs associated with that removal of equipment. The only thing that we do ask, that any holes or backfield in from the removal of that equipment, as well as notifying us before they come out of there so we can schedule a time to make sure there are no underground utilities that would be disturbed or cause a problem. So we're asking for your approval if we can donate this playground equipment to the Reedie Branch Baptist Church. And it falls in line with our policy 6560, disposal of school property.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion.
Hold up, Dr. Manuel, I've had John on hold over here.
I'm so sorry. I didn't see John. John, you have to raise your hand.
No, you're fine, Dr. Manuel.
I would never offend John. John, I apologize.
Mr. John Simmons?
I was going to do the same thing, Dr. Manuel.
Go ahead. You can do it. Take it. Go for it.
I think this would be a great opportunity. The church is going to write down the road from the school. People in the community went to that school. Anybody in that community can go to the church and use the playground. So I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and donate it to Reed Branch Church. They're going to assume all our abilities. It's going to take it off our hands. So I think this is a good win for everybody.
Okay. Yes, sir. Okay. All right. I've got a motion by Mr. John Simmons. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have a dollar amount on this?
For what?
So it's just to remove?
Yes.
So it's not, okay. So it's not replacing, we're not going to be adding new equipment there? Okay.
No, the school's closed.
Oh, yeah. Sounds good. I was going to make the motion too, but.
Well, since I got some motion, Mr. John Simmons made the motion.
I'll second it.
Well, I've already got a second. Mr. Henry Brewer made the second. And all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Next. Thank you, Ms. Sharon. Next, on action items is policy updates. Mr. Gentry. I got him.
Policy committee met on February the first. And committee thoroughly reviewed Parents' Bill of Rights and 2023 fall updates. There were a number of updates. And there was quite a bit of review on policies that are already in place. Mr. Bobby, you will help me here. There were two additions that we deferred until a later date to include in the updates. You could help us with that?
So, Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Williamson. So in the Parents' Bill of Rights, there are two policies that we reviewed in that section. But since these policies were presented to us, they actually have revised them again, and they are part of the follow-up dates. So those two policies will be 1310. We need to approve as part of the follow-up dates. And also, policy 4720 would be part of the follow-up dates, not the Parent Bill of Rights. And we only made one edit or addition to our, to the policies, and that will be on the policy 1310, where the title will change from parent involvement. We will add "and engagement" to that policy. But other than those, other than approving 1310 and 4720 as the follow-up dates and adding, excuse me, engagement as part of 1310, those were the only edits made to our policies.
Okay. Mr. Gentry is chairman of the policy committee. He has brought this for your approval. I need a second. Mr. Henry Brewer made the second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. Bobby Locklear, 2024-2025 school calendar.
Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Williamson, board members. It is that time again that we approve our calendar for the upcoming, for the 24-25 school year. And I want to start by just highlighting the law. I'm not going to read all of this to you. It was included in your packet. And I've said this for many, many years. Under this current law, our hands are pretty much tied as to our flexibility within the calendar. So the law requires that students start the Monday closest to the 26th. It must be out the Friday closest to June 11th. There are no waivers to the calendar. I'm not sure where the public and some folks believe that there's a waiver out there that we can apply for. There's no such waiver that we can apply for. Our calendar must have 185 days or 1,025 hours of instruction. We've opted to go with 1,025 hours of instruction. And actually, we exceed that by approximately four days that we call our bank days in case we have weather. We must have at least nine teacher workdays, and two of those must be days that teachers can take off. We have 10 annual leave days, and 11 holidays are designated for this school year or for next school year. So, Mr. Cole, if you will flip to the calendar. So this is what the calendar committee created in terms of our calendar for next school year. And again, I will just walk through this. Our students will start on August the 26th. We have all of our holidays highlighted in pink. All of our required teacher workdays are highlighted in blue. And I'm just going to go ahead and jump to the most important part. I believe everyone looks at December to start. We do have, or were able to work in, where we were able to get two full weeks at Christmas for both students and staff. So that is a key that we were able to put into place for this school year. Again, based upon the current law, our hands are tied in terms of attempting to schedule exams prior to Christmas. If we did say we would, we would be, we would have our first semester would be somewhere in about 74, 75 days. And instructionally, we just can't lose that many days. Easter next school year or in '25, you can see is late in April. And also, we have scheduled currently for our students to get out on June 6th, with that last week being teacher workdays. What we've attempted to do the last few years, and you can see it in this calendar, is have at least one day per month where students are not in the building to kind of facilitate a break. We are not able to give one day per month where teachers are able to be out of the building. But we do have those opportunities for students to be out. And this is our calendar, and at the bottom, teachers, Ms. Erica, are paid to work 215 days. So I kind of did a key at the bottom. 177 student days, 11 holidays, 10 annual leave, 17 workdays worked throughout, placed throughout the year. And that gives us a total of 215 days. And now, any questions on our traditional calendar?
Mr. Terry?
I'm looking at Cumberland's calendar for this year, their academic calendar. And I'm still grappling with trying to figure out how they can end the semester in December. And they started August, they started their semester August the 28th. It was the first day for students. So how can they end their grading period on December 19th? And they're taking exams the 13th through the 19th.
Yes, so we could, and this has been a discussion, we've actually tried it in the past. So you have 17 weeks between that August 26th and that December 20th date. That's 85 days. My math right? Yes, so that's 85 days. Last five days of the semester used for exams. So now you're down to 80 instructional days or 80 days in between those two periods. I have not taken out Thanksgiving, have not taken out Veterans Day, your two teacher workdays, nor Labor Day. So once you take into account all of that, you're probably down again somewhere to about 71 instructional days where students are sitting in front of a teacher receiving instruction. So, and we've done that before, and we cannot afford to lose 20 to 25 days. Or actually, the difference would be about 15 days lost between the two semesters of instruction.
So you're saying that their fall and their spring semesters aren't matching in terms of the number of days?
There are some, there are some districts who run a longer spring semester than they do their fall semester, yes.
Mr. Craig?
And Mr. Terry, let me, let me just say, we tried this a few years ago. And you almost throw numbers out. You end up with a first semester of 75 days, and the second semester's got 20, 100, excuse me, 100 days. And when we did it, the test scores, I think at the end of that year, were no better. And matter of fact, they might have been in some cases worse because of the least amount, the slow amount of actual classroom instruction that was in. And if, I think if they'd ever come in or say, we could start in August, then earlier, then we could divide this thing out to where we're looking at the 85 days or so each semester. Now, so what Fable was doing, unless I'm badly mistaken, Mr. Bobby, they're doing what we just said. They're going in first semester with like 70, 71 days, and second semester might be 100. And me personally, I just, I don't think that's for the kids neither. But that's what systems that are doing, and I think basically that's what they're doing.
So there's, what you're seeing is there's no way to have the same number of days in the fall and the spring without violating that August start date that we're locked.
If we are, so if we are attempting to get a semester that gets anywhere between 85 and 90 days, that is correct.
Don't you have a committee that looks at this calendar?
Yes, our committee consists of principals, teachers and central office staff.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this calendar.
I've got Mr. Britt with a motion to approve the 2024-2025 school calendar. I've got Mr. John Simmons with a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, what you have in front of you now is the early college calendar. Now, because they are a non-traditional high school, innovative cooperative high school, they do have flexibility. So they try to align their calendar as much with RCC as they possibly can. So we've gone through this, his staff has looked at this, and it meets all the requirements of the law. So we're asking approval for the early college calendar as well.
Okay. Okay. I've got Mr. Britt with a motion to approve the 2024-2025 school calendar for early college. I've got Mr. Gentry with a second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Erica. PRCO 56 bus drivers.
Good evening, Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Dr. Williamson and board members. I included in your packet when we had our initial discussions on the approval of the 23-24 school year, we were told that classified employees, including bus drivers, would receive a 4% increase, which we have given to all classified staff and bus drivers. But then there was another caveat to the budget that at a later point, which came for us in December, there would be an additional $4.7 million distributed to all the districts that the district needed to decide how that would be implemented. And I included an excerpt from a PowerPoint we have with DPI that explains that in detail. The amount of funding PSRC received was $71,009. And the intent was to create a permanent structure for bus drivers. And the easiest way to do that is to adjust the pay scale. That way, everybody who gets paid to drive a bus will get the same amount of an increase. So at this time, we are recommending to approve an additional 40 cent to each step. I've included the pay scale and how that was originally updated with the 4%. What the 40 cent adds and the changes in percentage wise that adds to each level. And that will guarantee that every person on the step gets at least a 2% some more. And you can see all those changes on the scale that I included. This will be reoccurring, I'm sorry, per DPI, it will be a reoccurring part of the budget. We assume it'll be a separate allocation each year as it has in this year. And the 40 cent will be retroactive to the employees. I will send this out to all the employees to let them know this is happening. Since today's the 13th, we're just getting approved. I can't guarantee it'll be in place by February, but I can guarantee it'll be in place by March.
Okay. And you're saying employees, that's bus driver and employees.
Bus drivers only. This was a specific part of the legislation for PRCO 56 and bus driver salaries only. The allocation has to be spent on bus drivers.
Correct. Mr. Henry?
Mr. Chair, I might make a motion that we accept this 4% increase. Anytime there's an increase in any of pay for our staff, I think it's well deserved.
I need a second.
Second.
I've got Mr. Brewer with a motion to approve PRCO 56 bus drivers. I've got Mr. Gentry with a second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Bobby, correct me. I think this is school bus driver appreciation week. So what a great way to say thank you to our drivers.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Erica, monthly financial report?
I've included the monthly financial report in your packet as well, and I can answer any questions anyone has this time.
I've got Mr. Simmons to approve the monthly financial report. Mr. Brewer with a second. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Britt? Yes?
Sit's down. I know we're ready to go. But with what we've seen in the news the last few months, we owe a debt of gratitude to this young lady for what she does.
No, sir. You owe it to everybody in this district because everybody works together to where we are.
All works together. That's great. Mr. Hughes back there, I done got him. But you know what we've seen in the news. And I just want to personally, and I know we all do, thank her for what she does.
Well, thank you, but it is really all the departments. All of us work together to ensure this complicated world of finance gets implemented. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Ms. Erica. Mr. Britt?
I moved that the Board of Education for the public schools of Robinson County go into closed session for the purposes of discussing certified and classified personnel in North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1 and 6, and to consult with attorney retained by the Board in order to preserve attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the Board of Education for the public schools of Robinson County, North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1 and 3, and to consider student matters that are considered with North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1 and 115C-402 and 20 U.S. Code 1232G.
I've got a motion by Mr. Britt to go into closed session. I've got a second by Mr. Simmons. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. We're in closed session.
Mr. Leach to come out of closed session, a second by Mr. Brewer. All those in favor say aye. All opposed no. Motion carries.
Hey, motion to approve personnel report as presented.
Motion to approve personnel as presented.
I've got a motion by Mr. Vontae Leach. To approve personnel report as presented. I've got a second by Mr. Gentry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed no. Motion carries. Motion to approve closed session minutes.
Motion to approve closed session minutes.
Got a motion by Mr. Vontae to approve closed session minutes. Second by Mr. Brewer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed no. Motion carries.
Anything else?
Yes, one more.
I can go ahead now.
All right, one more thing. I want you to, us to keep Ms. Keisha Davis Arnett. Her son passed away tragically. She's one of, she works at the board, Ms. Keisha Davis. Payroll. Keep her in the family. That's another reason why Melissa not here, that she was a kid too. So the family, the son tragically passed away, so just keep him in the prayers.
Okay.
We know that before we say prayer, we're in good debt. It might be good if we may overlook somebody or.
Mr. Craig.
Yeah, real quick, folks, I'm just gonna show this book. I think we get it. Ms. Monroe, if you're not, we need to check on it, but I don't read this book every month. But now there's some very good articles in this month's edition, and I'm just asking you as boardman. And I'm just asking you as board members, if you haven't looked at this book last month, you need to go back and take a look at it and take some time. And I will say especially page 28, and I can't remember the other page. But like I said, I don't read it, but when I grabbed it this time, there were some good ones in there. So take a look at it.
Okay. Mr. Vontae?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Vontae Leach. To adjourn, I've got a second by Mr. Henry Brewer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Meeting's adjourned.